To start the Revere City Council meeting for June 24th. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Senator, if you have a round of applause on behalf of the Senate.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas. Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Novosolsky.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present.
Approval of the Journal. Journals, I'm sorry.
Approval of the Journal of the meeting held on June 10th, 2013.
All in favor, all opposed, votes awarded.
Calendar item number one, joint meeting of Verizon Comcast and National Grid to discuss ongoing utility work.
Gentlemen, front and center. Name and address for the record, please.
For the record, Stan Yucovich, Verizon, with offices at 63 High Street in Davis.
And?
David Santana, National Grid, 40 Silverman Road, Waltham, Massachusetts.
Good evening, Mr. President, and Tim Kelly, Comcast Government Affairs, 55 Concord Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, 01864.
Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us today. We gave you a little respite for a couple of months, so hopefully we have a good report from Mr. Yucovich.
Mr. President, members of the council, we've made, I think, very good efforts in the past year, and as a matter of fact, I had been speaking with our construction crews and construction supervisors earlier this week, and was told that more poles have been pulled out of Revere than any other city or town in the 37 contiguous cities and towns in the region. So, you know, we've made a concerted effort, Verizon has, to try to eliminate the problems that we both face. I know in talking to Dan Cameron today that there is some news from EndGrid, and I'd let David speak to that.
Mr. President, we understand that we are next in line for a significant amount of poles. We anticipate this summer to be able to put an action plan together to get through as many poles as possible.
Mr. President, we have nine poles balling court right now. We'll continue to work with the other utilities to make sure we work right through the list and bring proper resolution to the double pole issue in the city.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for David. We've been talking up here.
Excuse me one second.
Excuse me.
Just want to let everybody know, I do have a copy of the double pole list, and I got an email on it, so we will make sure that we follow through and send you a copy, so everybody will have it probably tomorrow.
Super, very good.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. David, we've been talking about one street in Revere, around the corner from where I live, called Conan Street off Malden Street, and talking to your predecessor who was here, that will be done in the spring. Well, now we're in the summertime. Last week, they come in and filled in a couple of potholes there, and what I want to do is have the trench actually done, okay, from Harmon Street up to Fenley Street.
Okay.
Okay, and you can see that you people caused the problem, it's your trench, and I'd just like to have it resolved once in a while.
Just so I can be clear, Councilman, is this a restoration issue on that street?
No, it was on the bottom of Conan Street on Malden Street, but this will be Conan Street, from Harmon Street to Fenley.
Restoration, yes.
Yeah, it's probably a restoration, yes.
Okay.
Okay, see what you can do, David?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. David, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
This is your maiden voyage, and so we're going to be kind.
We'll be kind.
On Hutchinson Street, there was some work at the corner of Hutchinson and Emanuel that National Grid a while back, and it sunk in pretty good, and every neighbor there is very concerned about their safety. So can we get someone to help out with that particular spot?
That was Hutchinson Street, sir?
Hutchinson Street and Emanuel Street.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. And Stan, I have a couple of questions in reference to around poles, when the double, thankfully, the double poles are removed, but now we have a situation across from Two Martin Street where there's a big hole where the other pole was removed. And a couple of months ago, I asked that this be taken care of, and still the same way.
Okay, where's the location?
It's across from Two Martin Street.
Two?
Two, M-A-R-T-I-N Street, my house.
M-A-R.
My neighbor, every time he leaves his property, he reminds me about it, so I, and fairness to him, somebody's going to get hurt there.
So there's a hole?
There's a hole.
Okay.
And the other thing is that in front of 112 Hutchinson Street, I'm going to be addressing a council motion later on this evening, but there's a pole that's located there, and it seems like every speeding vehicle on Hutchinson Street, which has now become a major highway, is a cutoff, it's a detour because of the bridges down and linens and so forth. The pole's been hit twice, and I'm sure you have records of that, and pole's been hit twice within the last month. And my concerns are not only for those individuals that are injured, but the people, the property at 112 are in jeopardy because of their public safety. A pole comes down, it's going to crash right through their home and injure all those people.
And that's a double pole, counselor?
No, it's a single pole that keeps getting hit, so maybe we could do something to surround it with something. They don't want a guardrail there. They don't want a guardrail. They want maybe something that we can block it off with.
Okay, what we'll try to do is work with DPW, Revere DPW, to see what, you know...
Stan, if you need me, call me, I'll come right down, whatever we have to do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one pole that's been an ongoing situation, the neighbors have brought it to my attention, Davis Street and Patriot Parkway, it's unblocked, and the pole looks like it's a dangerous situation. It's been like that for quite a while.
A single pole?
I think it's a double pole.
Double pole.
It's not too long, the pole, it's kind of short, but it looks like it's dangerous. The other situation, I was walking around Pines Road this weekend, the neighbors brought it to my attention, Pines Road and the Linway, I guess the pole's at 45-degree angle, I guess the soil is soft or something, and it's making the pole lean more and more.
And that's it?
Pines Road and the Linway.
Pines Road and the Linway?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other one is I got a light pole that was hit by a truck in front of 50 to Linway, and that looks very dangerous. It's got a big dent in it, and it looks like that's leaning too, right in front of 50 to Linway. It's a metal pole with a light on it.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stan, that pole on the Linway at the corner of Rice Avenue, I believe I brought that up to yourself or Dan Cameron, this is a couple of months ago, and the pole currently is in a very precarious position. A good wind, a tap by a motor vehicle could knock that pole right into someone's home. There are no guide wires supporting that pole, nothing has been done to...
And that's a single pole?
That's a single pole.
On Rice?
No, on the Linway at Pines Road.
Are we talking about the same one that the counselor is?
Correct.
Okay.
I brought that up a couple of months ago, and it's still in that precarious position, and I'm just afraid, I don't want to have a similar incident to the one that we had down in Oak Island about a year ago.
Okay.
You know, and there's another one down on, in the same position, down on Dunn Road at the intersection of Sagamore Street. They did put a guide wire up to keep that pole from, in the event it goes, to keep it from falling into the street, but aesthetically, it doesn't look good either. I think it causes some concern for the residents down there, and I'd like to see both of those poles replaced, actually. And again, that's an area that's very damp down there, and that could very well be the cause of that, but...
Counselor, I know that on Dunn and Sagamore, our engineering team had already gone down to take a look at that. I'll find out if that's the guides that they put on it, expected to hold it for a while and then place an additional pole. I'll find out what the status is.
There is a guide wire, but it certainly has to be replaced, and is it Mr. Santiago? Is it?
Santana, sir.
Santana.
Santana. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Apologize. I had spoken to Dan Cameron as recently as a month ago. There is a situation on, at 143 Rice Avenue, Mr. McCush's property down there, and I know that Verizon is off of that pole right now, and I'm not sure about cable, if you're off of that pole or not, but that's a situation where we're trying to get that pole relocated off of his property so that he can proceed with the construction of a shed down there, which he's looking to do. So I wonder if you could mention that to Dan Cameron, if he's going to be on vacation, maybe you get the information from him and get back to me yourself. I'll give you my phone number before you leave this evening, because I'd like to get that straightened out as quickly as possible. The fellow's been waiting about six months now, and I believe that Verizon's been down there, I think you've been down there, haven't you? Yeah, and they've looked at it, and they're off the pole now, so it's up to National Grid now. Get off the pole and relocate it, and everybody will be happy down there. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, I made the huge error several months ago of saying that, jeez, there's not too many double poles in Ward 4, and I asked a quick, simple question. Turns out that that apparently caused you guys to come out and start sprinkling whatever it is that you sprinkle in the ground to make them grow, because now we got about, well, I just counted about 15 of them when I was driving around this afternoon. It brings me, since I really didn't have that many, I didn't have much of an interest in this conversation, but now you got me on your backs too, so. I did notice that there was some, and I have to tell you, Stan, I got some real bad news for you. It says VZ and then the number. I assume that's not for Vinnie Zullo, so it's got to be Verizon.
Vinnie Zullo has not owned a number of poles for a number of years. VZ designates the party that's responsible for planting the pole.
I see.
And essentially making sure that it's replaced or taken out, and the number that corresponds with it is the pole number, but, you know, it's just not a singularly owned pole, everyone's on it typically.
Sure. What is the, well, I guess this is a two-part question, what is the optimal time that one could expect that once that pole goes in, everything's going to be transferred onto the pole, and the other pole will be removed?
It's, as I've explained in the past, it's, you know, shared responsibility...
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening in the past, because I didn't have to, but now I am.
It starts at the top of the pole with the primary power, which would be EndGrid. They would move, and I believe that EndGrid also moves your streetlights, if streetlights are on. Next in line would be the fire alarm, then either private cable, there might be some private fiber, in some cases, the community may have an Intranet system.
Go.
Then comes TIM cable, and finally Verizon. So we're, while power is first on, first off a pole, we're last on, last off a pole, and it does move down that line, if you will. So any poles that have been placed, really, the power has to be moved first, so if, and I can't speak for the timeframe for anybody on that, but this process before this city council has been one to point out who's next and start the ball rolling.
Right, I understand that, but in this case, Verizon's putting the pole in the ground, so you know when you did that, and you are the last ones on, so you must have some idea of what the average or reasonable time would be.
I couldn't even begin to predict.
Okay. All right, so the next question I have is a structural issue. There's a pole at 311 Park Avenue at 255, and it's only one pole, but it's got all this stuff hanging off of it with a big angle, it looks like something out of Rube Goldberg. Remember Rube Goldberg, those old things? It's got a thing hanging here and something holding it against the pole, and what do we call that, first of all?
Guide wires?
No, no, it's, all the utilities, or most of the utilities, are on this little, looks like a section that was cut off the old pole and tied into the new pole.
Oh, okay, yeah.
What do we call that?
Section of a pole, essentially, yeah.
So we don't have any technical name for it?
No, no.
Okay.
But it's a double pole, essentially a double pole, but it's not in the ground or resting on the ground?
Yeah, that's been there for a long, long time.
And, Counselor, what would that, what street is that?
It would be on Park Avenue, it's in front of 311 Park, the pole number is 2555.
Okay, we don't have it listed, but what we'll do is take a look at this.
Oh, I mentioned it then.
Right.
Not even on the list.
And the pole number is 255?
Yeah, 2555.
Okay.
That's the pole number. All right, I guess that's all I got for you now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I have two questions. One was something that Counselor Guanasso and I spoke about, the pole in front of the Paul Revere School. So I'm not sure who that would be, but this is something that came up almost a year ago that I wanted fixed before school started.
Could you give me an idea of what street it's on?
It's on the corner of Roosevelt Street and Revere Street. And it blocks the view of people coming out of the side street in front of the school, so it's really not safe for the kids that cross there, and it's a busy street.
Okay, we have a number of poles on Revere that would be listed, but...
It's the corner of Roosevelt and Revere Street. No?
Okay.
Maybe? Okay.
I don't have a number.
I don't, do you have a number, Counselor Guanasso?
No, it's Paul Revere School. There's only one Paul Revere School.
No, no, I know, but...
Yeah, but there's only one Roosevelt Street, the corner of Revere Street and Roosevelt, right at the corner.
I can drive by in the morning and give you the number, I'm just not sure of it off the top of my head.
All right.
And the second one, again, I don't have the pole number, I have the address, but it's in front of 99 Sigourney. The resident there has contacted me several times about...
What is the address?
99 Sigourney Street.
Verney?
Sigourney.
Oh, Sigourney, okay. Yeah, that actually rests in the court of EndGrid to move first.
Well, thank you, guys.
Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, Mr. President, to Stan, basically my question would be to you, and basically, I'm glad to hear that in the 37 districts, we had the most poles taken down. That's all well and good, but if you look at your list you have there, there's some of those poles that have been there for a couple of years. I got some on Crystal Ave, the one on Bradstreet, I think, has been there for six years. Now, I know somewhere in the fire department, city of Revere, I talked to Chief Doherty, and he actually told me by the middle of July, he should have quite a bit done, but I noticed he did get some, but he should have them all done by July, the middle of July. I think that might be a financial matter, we have to July 1st, a new budget. But just getting back to what Counselor Riordan said, you can give us that update just by pressing a button on the computer. Is it possible you can put in court the date it's in court of, say...
We don't have the capability of doing that on this system.
You don't?
No.
So in other words, if, and it has happened, I know it's happened, let's say it's, and it doesn't happen to the cable, Mr. Kelly's great at it, he gets this done right away, but let's say it's an electrical, or lighted, or whatever, and it's there for a year, no one picks this up, I mean, it's just going to stay there. It's never going to get to you. You know, I mean, and some people see these poles up for three, four years, they see poles that are put up, and then six months later, taken down. Now, what am I supposed to tell them? Well, you know, evidently you're going to wait, you're probably on one on the street, they didn't get to you, they probably did multiple poles, because I know that happens.
Right.
You know, but I mean, some of them, like I said, I looked at the list, Crystal Ave, Crescent Ave, and the one on Bradstreet, really, I drive by every day, so I know it's been there for years, and I know Mr. Kelly probably drives through it. That one, I believe, may be in, I'm not sure now, because some were in the, most of all of mine in Ward were in the fire department. A lot of them are done. I think they're in electrical, I thought, I seen. But my thing is, as a matter of fact, I mean, I'll do it in my ward, but sure, Counselors, when you give it, mark down whose ball it's in, and, you know, it's not fair for these people to wait six months, a year, or even the cable company or whatever, waiting for them to do their work, and they're getting blamed because their work's not done. So, you know, maybe I'll just keep an eye on mine and fire after the person that is holding it up, because some of these are held up, you know, for whatever reasons. I know somewhere in the fire department of Revere, and it was a money issue, but the chief told me all of them should be done by July, so hopefully the ball starts moving on those. But, yeah, some of them have just been up for, like I said, the one on Bradstreet Ave has been there for at least six, seven years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Counselor Penta. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for National Grid, Dave?
Yes.
I mentioned several times, now that the weather is good, but I have brought up several times to Dan, and I know Counselor Gino also has mentioned in the past, the trenches on Sargent Street, actually, the road conditions, the trenches that are dug and redone, I actually get more complaints about that than I do actually the double poles, but, and quite a few complaints. But that one on side of the street has been brought up several times, and it's not only the trench that runs along the school, it's by the Whalen School, but it's the holes that were dug across the street that people are really having a problem with. So if you could look into that again, now that the hot pot plants are open and, you know, things can get, things can get done. Thank you. And I publicly want to thank Tim from Comcast for his good response this morning, helping me out, and thank you.
Okay, Counselor Patch. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I must say that I don't get double pole complaints anymore, which is a wonderful thing, because this, well, if you remember correctly, I put in an ordinance change back a dozen years ago because of this issue. I never dreamed we'd be this far along and we'd be cooperating this well, and I think it's really a tribute to the spirit of partnership that we've developed here, and it's a nice thing for me to be able to throw compliments to vendors when it used to be so adversarial. However, one question did come up when I was just talking to my colleague. We certainly know when the new pole goes in the ground, is that correct? Can we track when the new pole went that way? Can we track when a double pole is created, is what I'm getting to?
Yeah, there is a set date that the pole goes in, so that's tracked, but, you know, who has had it balling court?
You can't do.
Can't do.
Okay, but we do, we do have a track date for when the pole was set.
Right.
And so then, at that point, the first person is in court, is that correct?
That's correct.
Once the pole is set.
That's correct.
So we kind of have a tracking system. It may not be perfect, but it...
Right.
It is at least a starting point. Okay, thank you very much, Steve. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Okay, Counselor, thank you. I've already had my piece with you folks, and we thank you, and I know I have a few more that I'll have to do offline with you, an email, that I know the poles aren't on the list, but I have the numbers in my briefcase, so I'll have to send those to you offline.
Absolutely, and I make the offer, as well as my colleagues, I'm sure, back me up, but if you have a concern, that you can email to us with, you know, perfect situation would be pole number, but at least a street address at any time, so that we don't have to wait, you know, you don't have to wait a month, and, you know, that way there, if it's a one or two requests, that makes it easier for us to get it into our hands of operations. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it, and I enjoy these meetings, I think they're very productive, no, they're really productive, and everybody lets you know what their priorities are. So thank you very much, and thanks to Counselors for their time.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the proposed ordinance regulating medical marijuana in substance abuse treatment centers.
Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors. Okay, this will go into committee. Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, it's on the committee, that's fine. I was just going to ask that we have a one-year auditorium, which we're allowed by the state to have that, but if it's going to go in committee, that's fine.
Yeah, the, what's happening here, ladies and gentlemen, is that we're establishing a zone for the marijuana distribution centers, and we're also relocating these substance abuse centers that we had put in HB before, we're going to move them into the same zone as we put the medical marijuana centers. So that'll come up in zoning in the future, whenever Counselor Riordan wants to bring it up in his committee, and if there's no other comments, we'll close that portion, and we'll move on.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on the application of Black Marble Motorcycles LLC, 1760 Rivera Beach Parkway, Everett, Mass., seeking a special permit from the Revere City Council for a commercial garage use to enable the appellant to operate a motorcycle franchise at the properties located at 649, 655 Squire Road, and 1 Wesley Street, Revere, Mass., within the industrial park zoning district.
All the proponents, the applicants, and I want to remind everybody by city ordinance, this has to go into committee. We cannot act on it within less than one week, and so we can't do it on the same night, and we are planning on having a zoning subcommittee meeting on July 8th at 5:30, and then following that, we will have a special city council meeting to vote only on these three items dealing with Harley-Davidson and Black Marble. Okay, so name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Counselors. Corey Rhodes of D'Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. As the President stated, we're here on three special permit applications, one for a commercial garage, one for a Class 1 vehicle sales use and a warehouse use, and finally, one to modify a non-conforming sign.
Corey, just one quick second.
Yes.
I know you have all three, so I'd like you to speak on all three of them, and then we'll open and close each one after the fact, like we did prior, and then we can work on it bulk instead of calling each individual fire.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. This is all related to Harley-Davidson of Boston coming to Revere, making it its New England hub, they're moving into the Johnny's Food Master building and the neighboring property in Bally's. This is a significant investment for Harley-Davidson and a big improvement, I think, to these properties. We're talking $14 million to give them the facelift and beautification that they really need, and to do this, they do need some special permits granted. And to do this, they do need some special permits granted in order to sell motorcycles, new and used motorcycles there, to warehouse and store the motorcycles, to fix them, that's the commercial garage, and they do have a non-conforming sign on Squire Road. This is not the big pylon sign in the back, this is one right on the front. If you see on this slide, just a fairly small change, they're gonna be putting their logo on top. But it is non-conforming, so we do need to seek a special permit on that as well. These are the three things they really need to get this operation moving, start construction, start investing those dollars in Revere, and they appreciate any support you have.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing or seeing none will close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing or seeing none will close that side of the hearing. And now on CZ, um, CZ 1312, you wanna read it?
Hearing called is ordered on the application of Black Marble Motorcycles LLC, seeking a special permit from the Rivera City Council for a Class 1 vehicle sales use and warehouse use to enable the appellant to operate a motorcycle franchise at 649, 655 Squire Road, and 1 Wesley Street, Rivera, Mass.
Okay, are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there, hearing or seeing none will close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing or seeing none will close that side of the hearing. Now, we'll do CZ 13 for the record.
Hearing called is ordered on the application of Black Marble Motorcycles LLC, seeking a special permit from the Rivera City Council to enable the appellant to modify a non-conforming sign at the property located at 649, 655 Squire Road, Rivera, Mass.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing or seeing none will close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing or seeing none will close that side of the hearing. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, if anybody wants to make a quick comment, again, they're going to, this is gonna go into zoning, so we'd appreciate it. Quick, Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, what are they planning on doing with the health center? Is that gonna be?
The Bally's is that's specifically being used for warehousing, that's a special permit for warehousing.
Are they planning on doing work to it?
Yes, yes.
Not leaving it vacant?
Uh, no, they're not leaving it vacant. That's a big part of this, they're moving into these buildings, and they're gonna be using them fully.
Okay, mainly that's the only questions I've gotten from my constituents.
Yeah, that will be definitely used by Harley.
They're curious what was gonna happen with that building.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Councillor, Councillor Riordan?
I just want to remind, we've already established July 8th as the public, I'm sorry, the subcommittee, zoning subcommittee, so if anybody out there is interested in making further comment, July 8th at 5:30 PM in the chambers, thank you.
So noted, thank you, Councillor. Councillor Penta.
Mr. President, just looking at calendar number 11, has to do with this communication, we just, um, would that make a part of the record?
So noted, I was gonna mention that, thank you very much. Number 11 will make part and parcel of this. Hearing that, hearing, seeing none, thank you, and we'll see you on July 8th.
Thank you very much, councillor.
Calendar item number six, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Councillor Rigo, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 4th, the Ways and Means Subcommittee had a meeting with two items on the agenda. First, we had item number 13-133, which was a communication from the mayor relative to the transfer of funds from various accounts. That was reported out favorably. There were a number of, a number of different, kind of, housekeeping items that were put together by the mayor, and those were reported out favorably. And the second item was 13-122, which was an ordinance relative to certain persons not represented under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 150E, Section 10, and that was held in committee, and I expect that that will be a portion of that, or the full thing will be taken up in a subcommittee meeting sometime this week. Thank you.
Any comments from any councillors on the committee report? On the recommendations, roll call.
This is on the communication relative to the transfer of various funds for the end of the fiscal year. Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer of funds have been approved. Calendar item number seven, report of the Appointments Subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman, Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, um, dash 13-059 for reappointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. I would suggest to the clerk that we send a communication to those individuals who have not appeared. It's like the third or fourth meeting that we haven't had their attendance, and tell them it's important for the integrity of the rest of the committees. On 13-059, for reappointment to the Revere Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring on March 1st, 2016, Ms. Santa Esposito has been approved by the Appointments Subcommittee. 13-078 for appointment as a licensed drain layer, Mr. Richard A. Peters, DBA Emergency Sewer Drain and Repair. Again, we hold this one, Mr. President, based on the fact of non-attendance, and send a letter to him saying this is the final time, we'll keep this on the agenda. 13-119 for appointment as a licensed drain layer, Mr. CJ Dougherty, and that was naturally approved by the Subcommittee. 13-151 for appointment as a constable, Mr. Samuel Valentin, 110 Keeney Street, that was approved by the Appointments Subcommittee. And lastly, the 13-152, appointment for as a consul, Mr. Keith Henderson, 25 Shaw Street, Rex Ross Street, that was also approved. I asked the chair that we vote on these all at once, if there's any objection from the council, we can do it accordingly.
Are there any objections from the councillors? Hearing or seeing none on the appointments as a whole.
Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Before you go, Madam Clerk, Mr. Chairman, on 59, on the Parks and Recreation folks, none of those folks have appeared?
No, I pointed out that Mrs. Santa Esposito did appear, and she's been confirmed.
That's for Cultural Council?
Right.
Okay.
And the appointment for the representatives I showed, and I asked that they be sent the uh
If I can make a suggestion, where these came from the mayor's office, that, you know, how many times can we contact the individuals? Maybe we should contact the mayor and let
Okay.
The note come from him.
Yeah, send the communication to the mayor asking him.
The word came down from him and say, listen
Yeah.
To the mayor.
I agree with that.
So.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I would also suggest, next time, we just say, sorry, vote against it, you know, shoot them down. Okay, next.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the Department of Planning and Community Development relative to the capital improvement program for FY 2014 through FY 2018.
Councillor Rigo? No? No, okay. This is just a communication, everybody should have a copy of it. Place on file.
Calendar item number nine, communication from William Bell relative to the residency ordinance as it pertains to an employee of the school department.
Waive the reading and place on file.
Calendar item number 10, communication from Bob Fox of US Road Sports relative to the Allstate Half Marathon.
We're setting that up for July 24th, present, 22nd, I'm sorry, presentation.
Calendar item number 11, communication from Site Plan Review relative to recommendations for 649, 655 Squire Road, and 1 Wesley Street special permits.
Those were attached to the public hearings.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the establishment of a revolving fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half.
Does anybody have any issues with this? You want, you want to go Ways and Means? Okay, we'll send that to Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to budget amendments for the Engineering and Inspeccional Services Departments.
That'll go to Ways and Means on the, dealing with the budget. Excuse me? That just came in tonight. Is that the one we talked? Yeah. Revolving account will go into Ways and Means. Budget amendments, Ways and Means. Pro forma recap.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the pro forma recap sheet for FY 2014.
Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Councillor Correggio that the city council move to reappoint Joseph Lake to the Rivera Employment Monitoring Committee for a two-year term.
Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Councillor Correggio that the mayor request the Economic Development Director Site Plan Review, and that should read Covington Inc., which is the new owner of the residential portion of the Wonderland TOD project, to appear before the Rivera Residents Monitoring Committee to discuss anticipated economic development projects, the types of construction being used, and whether or not union labor is expected to be utilized in the construction of these projects. Furthermore, that the Wonderland TOD project residential portion, which Eurovest sold to another developer, be specifically discussed at this meeting.
Councillor Correggio.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We're trying to get a status report with this new company, originally, Eurovest was the original developer, and we're trying to get an update of what this company's about, what are they proposing, if they're gonna use Revere residents and union labor, and what type of construction is going on the site, and basically update the council of other issues such as insurance, workman's comp, to make sure they have the proper insurance. So we want an update what's going on with that project down there, and hopefully we can have the company, Covington, meet with us, also a letter be sent to them that we can meet with representatives from that company. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you are aware, I've called for a meeting of the Economic Development Subcommittee on July 8th at 5 o'clock. We will address that issue along with any other economic impact projects in Revere. I'd rather have a meeting to address all of them, because sometimes we pick, we happen to read in the local paper what's going on, we're not apprised of what's going on, and I think it makes sense that we collectively, when we vote in special permits, et cetera, we be aware of what's really going on. Thank you.
Councillor Zambudo.
I'm glad to hear that we're gonna have a meeting with the Economic Development Committee to discuss this, and, I mean, I think looking for workers' comp, et cetera, is a bit of a stretch. I think that, you know, Massachusetts state law has all that, I think the bottom line here is that there were some commitments made by Eurovest that he was gonna use, fully use, union labor. Now, whether that's changed because a piece of it is sold, I don't know. I think a commitment is a commitment, and we'll deal with that when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we were having a meeting. I think we should send this there, because why just the residential end of this? I think all parties, Eurovest and whoever, and I think Eurovest could sell it, but it says sold in here, I don't know. So there's a lot of questions to be asked, and I think it all should go to the committee, and then actually set up a platform of who we actually want up here to the next meeting, at the committee meeting or something, so, I mean, I don't think it should just the residential end of it. I was hoping it built no residential, but with that being said, this probably should be sent right to committee.
That's what's gonna happen.
Okay.
It's going to Economic Development, and the Councillor Haas is the chairman, and he will, you can discuss that with him as far as what you want to bring in, okay?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Councillor Correggio that the mayor request the DPW to install a catch basin in 110 Rice Ave, and to investigate a possible misconnection to a ladder line causing flooding in this area.
Councillor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is brought to my attention this past weekend with the heavy rainstorm. There's no catch basin in that area to absorb the water, and it causes a major flood, the entire section there of that street gets flooded with any duration of rain. So they need to establish some type of a connection, a lateral line in the area to be able to put a new catch basin, our drainage system, to accommodate the neighbors down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand exactly where that is. As a matter of fact, I've spoken with Mr. Stringi regarding that particular area. I believe that's at, it's Zero Rice Avenue where it's puddling, and that's something that we're gonna look into, the monies that we're getting to reline all of our catch basins and rebuild our catch basins throughout the city, so, and I understand that area, I've seen it many times as I go by there, and it's gonna take an expenditure from community development, and I'm sure that they will be doing that. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Councillor Guanasso that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to investigate the feasibility of instituting one-hour parking at 843 Broadway, end of the corner of Broadway and Folsom Street adjacent to BW's Grill.
Councillor Guanasso.
Motion speaks for itself.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Councillor Novoselsky that the mayor request the appropriate department to restripe the parking meter lines along Shirley Ave, Dehone Street, Centennial Ave, and Garfield Ave.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Councillor Guanasso that the mayor request the DPW to install a guardrail in front of the telephone pole at 112 Hutchinson Street. The pole has been hit twice in the past week, and the resident in this location is fearful of his home being damaged.
Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, that wasn't the past week, it was the past couple of months, but having said all that, I, the resident who lives at that particular location doesn't want a guardrail, but in terms of further spelling out what's taking place at that location, I ask that his son-in-law, Craig Malinowski, come up and speak before the council to address the issues that are occurring at 112 Hutchinson Street, and I might add, on a very, very frequent basis, which is really unacceptable to not only Craig's family, but to me, as a representative of that area. Craig, could you please enlighten us as to what's taking place there?
Sure.
Name an address for the record.
Sure. Craig Malinowski, 112 Hutchinson Street, here in Revere, Mass. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. On behalf of the Hutchinson Street members, we are a small street that makes up about eight houses. We are one of the most busy traveled streets in Revere. We come right from the beginning of Revere Street, if you're coming back from Revere Beach, and we end at American Legion Highway. We are the gateway to the residents of Winthrop, Revere, Lynn, Swamscott, anyone that travels from those roads over knows my street, knows our house. With recent accidents, we're seeing a pattern with excessive traffic, vehicles beeping constantly all hours of the night, loud music, trash openly thrown from vehicles before getting on American Legion Highway, broken bottles. Recently, there's been a lot of commercial vehicles, which make up buses, 18-wheelers, dump trucks. One thing I'd like to add about dump trucks, I don't know if you've ever heard one hit a speed bump at, an empty dump truck at 35 miles per hour, but it makes it sound like the trucks come through your house. You know, the screeching of tires, we've never even really touched on the amount of carbon monoxide that's entering our houses on a daily basis. Last week, a car full of girls got out and started dancing. Last week, a car full of girls got out and started dancing, had a party right there on the middle of Hutchinson Street, blocked traffic for five minutes. Unfortunately, there wasn't any police around when we needed them. Really, I mean, I've spoken to Ron Coranto, who's the COO of Cataldo Ambulance. It's a problem. They're blocking the intersection for the ambulances to come out. That's going to affect every resident that needs 911 service when leaving our area. They block the intersection, they have to lay on the horn, they have to lay on the siren when they're really not supposed to use the siren until they get up towards Revere Street. It's a problem. He says it's atrocious. He actually went on record saying that with me. I'm not saying that we limit the street to a one-way, but maybe limit the entrance times, like you've done on Sagamore Street, that used to be a cut-through, which goes over behind Duncan Doance off American Legion Highway, or even Harris Street, which is down where the Ritz used to be, that used to be a cut-through to get, for everybody to get to Wonderland. What I'm trying to do, and my goal, is to improve the quality of life for all residents on Hutchinson Street. My family is now, my girls are going to be the third generation raised in that house. I mean, I could have picked up and moved anywhere, and we stayed there. We've just seen our little tiny cut-through street just be a major highway at some point. I mean, we should start charging tolls. We'd actually make money for the city. So, again, that's really all I have to say, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Correggio that the mayor request the Department of Public Works to repave Whitmore Road in the interest of public safety.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this has been brought to my attention to a lot of the businesses there. There's only a few businesses there. You have Alcom, Alcom Communications, and you have the Whitmore Company, and you might have a body shop, I'm not sure. But the street has really never been addressed. It's a neglected street. Some people don't even know where Whitmore Road is. But it's still a city street, and it needs attention. And there's huge craters. A lot of people doing business there have ruined their cars, and the businesses ask me if we can have the street repaved. So, the bottom line is, this consideration can be given to have the street repaved and bring it up to par with the other streets in the city of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Counselor Haas? Aren't they planning to build a hotel down the road? And they're going to have to dig it up anyways to bring in water and sewage.
If I may.
Sure.
From what I understand, the hotel has purchased the gas station at that, across on the other side of the road from Whitmore, the Whitmore Corporation. And it's my understanding that they want to make a new entrance going into their parking lot instead of coming around on the American Legion Highway to make that their new entrance. So, that's what I understand. So, that may happen down the road, so. Yeah, I understand. Mr. President, point of information? Counselor Powers, point of information?
You're correct, Mr. President. As a matter of fact, last Friday, I met with the owners, a representative, some comfort in, along with the beautification committee, and that gas station, where the gas station was, that is going to be another entrance, which will go probably right across Whitmore Road, and they'll have to do that whole area down there. And then, the other thing, too, is they're going to be also sponsoring the re-bautification of Bell, AKA Mahoney Circle, down there. They're going to be putting a lot of money in there, irrigating it and landscaping it, and that whole area is going to look nice. And I'm well aware of Whitmore Road and what has to be done down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, point of information?
What's your point of information, Counselor?
Just to enlighten some of the counselors, I did see some site work being done where the old gas station used to be. So, I seen some construction activity. So, what that's about, I'm not sure, but it might be in reference for what was spoken about tonight.
I don't know, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo is still...
I think pretty much everything's been said about the new entrance, except that I believe the hotel is on hold. There's some negotiating problems going on right now, unfortunately. So, no good news to report on that. Thank you.
That is correct. And I don't know if it's me, but when I look at a map, I look at Whitmore Road. That looks like John Mooney Road to me, when it's on the books. So, okay, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor include Avalon Street on the next capital improvement list to be repaved in 2014 or sooner. This street is a major exit roadway for Garfield School personnel leaving the garage and parents picking up students.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered.
Late communication from the mayor relative to additional items for the FY 14 proposed budget.
We will put that into Ways and Means as part of the budget package. Any other leads? No further business. The next meeting will be July 8th, a special meeting, and then the next regular meeting will be on July 22nd. So, everybody have a...
Mr. President?
You have Ways and Means meetings.
Oh, Mr. President, are we going to vote on the votes before July 1st?
Yes, that's on July 28th, is it?
June 28th.
I mean, June 28th. That Thursday, special meeting.
That would be a council meeting, correct?
Special meeting, yeah. Special meeting.
Regular time at 6:00.
Counselor Rego, 6:00 for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a regular city council meeting at 6:00 on Thursday, June 28th.
27th is the Thursday.
And that'll be for the budget only, for the, no other business for that night.
And that will start at what time is it?
6:00.
6:00.
Okay, and we have our regular Ways and Means meetings coming up Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, and then the budget, and Thursday will be the regular meeting. With that, hearing no other business, motion adjourned, all.